Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting on October 20th at 6:38 PM. I'd like to first read our district policy if we have. The Douglas Public School offers diverse learning experiences that meet the academic, social, physical, and emotional needs of all students. We provide a safe, supportive, and challenge-learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of students. I'm going to, we don't need to go into executive session this evening, so we're going to remove that, and we're going to rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Aye.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I'd like to call our student representatives, Ryan Benoit and Adriana Acosta.
Hi, I'm Adriana Acosta.
I'm Ryan Benoit.
And we are part of the 2021 to 2022 Student Council, and we're here to update you on what's been happening around the middle school.
So far, our sports teams are doing great. We have JV girls and boys soccer, cross-country, JV volleyball, and golf are going at the moment. One of our 7th grade students was even selected to partake in a varsity golf tournament. Both soccer tournaments, teams are working hard to bring home victories in their upcoming games. Cross-country and volleyball have been having great seasons and are doing their best to keep it up. Tier and middle school basketball will be starting soon.
School activities. DMS has created hard-working and exciting clubs and organizations for their students this year. Yearbook, Student Council, Best Buddies, and Mock Trial have all just started up, and we're excited to get students back into the DMS community. The Student Council has elected members and has come up with an executive board, and has started to plan out what activities we will be doing this school year. Ms. Miller and Ms. Oje are running Mock Trial on Tuesday afternoons through a virtual program open to 7th and 8th graders and 6th graders who take debate as a class. Students have begun to go over the basics and will soon meet with a lawyer, talk about courts, and how trials run.
This year, we have a wonderful yearbook committee made up of many 6th graders and a few 8th graders. Ms. Walker and Ms. Oje are running the program. The committee is in the process of learning to be better with their photography skills so I can start taking pictures for this year's yearbook. Once this underway, the yearbook group will hold up cover competition where students can submit their artwork and complete, to make the cover. Mrs. Martinson and one of our 8th grade students, Victoria, are trying to start up the Best Buddy program. They're working hard to come up with creative ideas on how to make up the program and fun enjoyable to all participants.
This year, both the chorus and the band have great talents from each grade. The chorus is working quickly to prepare their upcoming Halloween concert next Friday. Band is also working on two songs, Ancient Hunters and Simple Gifts.
To celebrate World Smile Day on October 1st, the Student Council decorated the school with positive quotes and encouraged the students to wear yellow and spread happiness and kindness throughout the school.
This month, the middle school has started doing Musical Fridays. Students from band play an instrument of their choice to the students as they make their way into the school. This occurs every Friday morning, and our most recent performance was "On the Piano" by Catalina Acosta, my little sister.
In 8th grade, students are working very hard to do their best in each class. In algebra, students are learning about scientific notation. Science classes are currently working on learning about Earth and space. English classes just completed a fun summer reading project. Each student had to create their own individual newspaper based off the book they read. After the writing was complete, each class had a gallery walk to view the amazing project around the room. In civics class, we're learning about democracy and how ancient civilizations' ideas shaped the form of the government we have today. Lastly, in Spanish, we have been working on, working hard to prepare for the upcoming test on all the words and phrases we have been learning so far throughout the year.
In 7th grade, students have just started reading the book Restart, which is about a middle school student who gets injured and gets amnesia. The students have just done a lab in science about yeast bioreactors, and in math, they've just finished up learning about integers, fractions, and decimals. The students have just started to learn about the Indian subcontinents in history class and are very excited to learn about it.
And the 6th grade, and the 6th grade kids have just started to learn algebra and started their own unit on using exponents. They're excited to start learning some new and higher-level math this year. In world history, the students have started to learn about why history is important, and they're researching the past of Douglas using techniques from past archaeologists and anthropologists. In ELA, kids are starting their summer reading projects and making character maps.
Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the public comic and communication, do we have anybody online that'd like to? We have no old business which we need to discuss? Any new business that we need to discuss? Moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Start with some updates on COVID. We started a pool testing last week, so again, a big thank you to our nurses who put that together. We have about 20% of our school population who have volunteered in taking part of the pool testing. So now we have all three of our mitigation testing strategies in place, the symptomatic testing, the test and stay, and the pooled testing. So really happy that that's available to kids, to faculty, and to staff, so that's up and running. And the next thing is to do with staffing. Anyone who's watched the news has seen that there's a shortage of people who are applying for jobs. We're not immune to that here in town. So we've posted on School Spring, our principals check on a daily basis, School Spring for applicants. We're bringing people in. We've posted on our marquees. We've posted on newsletters. Today, I send a separate mailing out to families to say, here are some vacancies. We have substitute teachers, cafeteria workers, custodians, some paraprofessionals, some ABAs. We have some long-term subs that we still are looking for. So if people are interested or know someone who's interested, please contact your building principals. We're doing everything we can do to make sure that we're fully staffed, but we're struggling to have people apply, and I think we're seeing that throughout the nation. You go to any store, you go to any restaurant, you see the sign right on the door that says, we're short-staffed, and we haven't been immune to that here in town. So if you're looking to apply, looking for work, we're a great place to come work with flexible hours, friendly hours, benefits, and a great team. So that's my COVID-19 update. Any questions about COVID? The next piece is our blueprint. This is a document that I'm really proud of, and it was the collaborative work of a lot of people to bring this to fruition. We started this process back in January of last year with a team of teachers, administrators. We had students on board. We had community members. And the first thing we did is we had to identify our improvement priority areas. Those were our five big buckets, so to speak, of things that we were going to focus in on for our strategic planning. As a refresher to those of you in the community, it was academic excellence, community partnership, the well-being of all, local and global citizenship, and growth mindset. So those were our five big buckets that we came up with. What we had to talk about today are the strategic actions. What are we going to do this school year and next in order to make sure that we're meeting those five priority areas? So we started putting in place these strategic actions. Just a little bit of history about how we came up with these strategic actions. As part of the committee, we developed and we talked about what are some of the strategic actions we want to see under these priority areas. Prior to my arrival, Mr. Mainz had a huge whiteboard filled with priority areas, which we included. This summer, at our leadership retreat, principals, assistant principals, and district leadership, we had school committee members on board, created and identified some strategic actions. Then at the start of the school year, principals, through their site councils, through faculty meetings, also identified and had people identify strategic actions. So it was a true collaborative effort. What we did about two to three weeks ago is we took those 20, 30, 40 things under each of these, and we tried to synthesize them and come up with five or six strategic actions underneath the improvement priority areas for us to focus in on for this school year. And that's what you have before you today. A lot of the goals that you identified for me align really great with these. The principal's goals, Director of Special Education, their goals are all going to be aligned to this blueprint. So this is our final copy. What we'll be doing throughout the year is updating the committee and the community as to how we're doing on these strategic actions. Most of them are one-year goals. Some of them are two- to three-year goals. And here they are before you, so be more than happy as you look at these to answer any questions you might have.
I did have a question, just curiosity, under local and global citizenship.
Sure.
So the last Strategic Action Review core values of schools to ensure that they are supportive of citizenship. Are we talking about like being citizens of the district, citizens of the US, like what type of citizens are?
We're talking about being good local and global citizenship. So a member of the Douglas community, the world community, so how are our goals aligned with being a good local and global citizenship? And when you read the descriptor under local and global citizenship, it will demonstrate a sense of personal, local, and global responsibility towards ethical and empathetic behavior towards others to impact a positive change in the world.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As you can see from reading these, some of these are, let's say, easily attainable within a year, but some of these are things we can do in a year. Some of these might be a multi-year goal.
It's more or less the building blocks that'll go into, I believe, into your goals if you're going to.
Correct.
So I think that it's, like, I really like the blueprint. I think that it's awesome that so many people worked on it. I said before, like, I love the growth mindset and the idea of lingering and ambiguity. And, you know, especially like the idea of students being part of the goal-setting. I think that's really important to take ownership and pride over the work that they do and give them a sense of sort of having a part in that creative process and not just being sort of cogs in the academic wheels, so, yeah, I think that's awesome.
Right. Next are my goals for this school year based off of conversations that we've had in previous meetings. So I have four goals before you today. So the first goal aligns with standard one, and it says, through a comprehensive and team approach, the strategic actions identified by students, staff, and community members and the leadership team will be initiated and implemented throughout the 2122 school year. So the first goal is to take what we just read in the blueprint and work collaboratively as a team to implement that goal. The next three goals align with what we discussed in previous meetings around the three, around the four standards. The first standard is instructional leadership. And what we have here for the first goal is, by June 2022, the leadership team and I will have prioritized student engagement, fostering a safe learning environment, and clear objectives with purposeful feedback in classroom observations. Feedback to staff and observations will highlight at least one of these three areas. So when you're talking about the instruction indicator, we want to make sure that when we go in and we see teachers in classrooms, that we're seeing kids are engaged, we're seeing that effort at work, we're seeing that meeting the diversity of needs. We actually did this, it was interesting, we did this activity over the summer. We identified what were three non-negotiables that we wanted to see in every single classroom when we went in. And we worked collaboratively, and we came with student engagement, we came with purposeful instruction, and we came with a safe learning environment. So when we were discussing my goals for the year, and we focused in on the instruction indicator, and it aligns perfectly with engagement, quality and effort of work, and meeting the diverse needs of students. So we've actually started doing work, I think we've watched three calibration videos. We had another one today that we watched. We watched a sample lesson, and we had the discussion around what did engagement look like? Was the instruction purposeful, and was it a safe learning environment? So we're doing that calibrating, so then when principals and assistant principals go inside classrooms, they know what to look for. So that's the second goal. The third goal falls under management and operations, the environment. And what I have is, throughout the 2122 school year, the district will prioritize and focus on the health, safety, social, emotional well-being of staff and students by offering programs, providing resources, and supporting members of the Douglas Public Schools in these areas. So again, we're looking to really focus in and emphasize this area. Last Friday, we had Teen Truth come in to do some work with kids. They met with all high school kids, and they did some stuff around, in small groups, in the leadership team. And it was basically how to be kind, how to support each other. And then the gentleman left 180-day curriculum with us that we can use in our advisory at the high school. At the primary school, going all the way down the other end, we had Johnny DeKay come in and play music for kids all around, being kind, being nice, being respectful. So we did that. Mr. Ramado's putting together a comprehensive plan for me for both students and staff around how we can be an ally and how we can support all students within our school community. We're continuing with morning meeting. I think at one of our previous meetings, we heard what the principals are doing and what's happening at the building level around supporting this initiative. So it's really important for us to focus in and offer those resources to staff and to students around social, emotional well-being. The last goal is around family engagement, sharing responsibility. By the end of the 2122 school year, we will increase our collaborative efforts with families to support student learning and development both at home and at school. So how can we partner better with families? We're part of the School in Maine Institute's initiative on family engagement. We sent something out to teachers, to kids, and to families to become involved in this. And part of that initiative that we're working on this year is, we do a great job involving families in what's going on in our schools. They come to meetings, they come to plays, they go to games, they come to NHS inductions. We do a great job involving them. We want to move from involving to engaging and partnering with them. And that's what the big part of this initiative is. We're really going to look at the RTI process. So there's a lot of things we're going to do to partner better with families in order to support students both at home and at school. The fourth standard, the professional culture, is managing conflict indicator. I tried hard to write a goal that was measurable for that, and I struggled to write a goal for it. And I went back and I looked at the four goals that I proposed for you. And in order to implement these, we're going to have to partner with people. We're going to have to build consensus. There's going to be some disagreement as to how we do things. There might be some conflict around how do you implement these. So embedded in these four goals is that professional culture goal. Again, I tried to write something around it, but I struggled to find a way to make it, like, I will resolve seven conflicts by the end of the school year. And I'm like, I hope I don't have seven conflicts by the end of the school year. And then it's, okay, how do you define managing or addressing seven conflicts? So I'm hoping to embed that within these four goals.
Does anyone have any questions? So I guess my commentary would be, when would you be able to? Because we have to set that, because we have elections coming up, so we have to back into dates. So would you be able to present to us your findings either March 16th of 2022 or March 30th? Probably the 16th because the first week of May is when town meetings are, and so we have to have everything wrapped up right after that. So just to give us enough time to get the feedback, to get the feedback to you before we get the new person.
So what I could do is probably around December, January, I can give you, it wouldn't be a mid-cycle, but it would be a halfway review. And then I could do a final presentation for that March 16th.
March 16th. Is everybody in agreeance with that date?
So then we would be, sorry, remind me again what the order of operations is there. So he'd have that meeting, and then we would, based on that meeting.
Provide the feedback on, based on what we, yes. And so then I have to take in all the information.
Are we trying to vote on it before the election, or are we going to do after the election?
I'm trying to do it before the election because generally speaking, I think it's one more meeting, maybe, depending on how it falls.
Yeah.
And then you're off.
Can we just do a three-month timeframe? We have November, December, January, three months of data, right?
Oh, you'll have until March.
Well, I think part of the other issue is that, like, the idea is supposed to.
Report in February.
It's supposed to be like the growth over a school year, right?
It'll be March. He'll present in March.
But does that give enough time?
We usually got them pivot earlier than May.
If needed.
I think we would vote on them the first weekend.
You could come, Paul could come and present to us.
Because then you have April, May, by the end of the year.
But then we'd be setting the new one for the new year we'd be setting. But that's not, because you have elections, you have to. You have to close out his evaluation before the elections.
She said that. Yeah, I'm saying if we have a report sooner than March, after three full months of this, you know, these goals in place, you know, is that?
I don't know, that's realistic.
Maybe, to have these completed in three months?
Yeah.
Have an idea of what, where we're at, I guess, is my question.
So I plan on doing something in December, probably the first meeting in January, to give you an update as to where we are with the goals and with the blueprint. I plan on doing that. In March, we can come and we can present on these. You know, in terms of, for instance, I'll look at some of these, take standard one, the blueprint, and completing that. We'll have a good idea in March which ones we've started, which ones we're halfway through, which ones we know we're going to complete by the end of the year, and which ones are going to have to be carried over into the next year. In terms of, you know, the second one, in terms of giving staff feedback. Usually, our observations go through the end of the school year, and principals are still in classrooms in April and May. If we've only done and only have four evaluations done between now and March, we know we're in trouble. If we have 100 done between now and March, and we know that we still have another 25 to do, I'm relatively comfortable sharing with you that we're well on our way to completing this goal, but we still have some time. In terms of the SEL piece, again, we're going to be talking and discussing and working on that throughout the school year. So the bulk of what we're doing is already in place, and if we have additional assemblies or meetings or presentations, usually by March or April, they've already been scheduled into the calendar. So although we might be doing an activity on, at the elementary school, on the elementary school's version of Johnny DeKay, although it might not have happened, you'll know it's been scheduled. So I can be flexible if the committee's flexible, knowing that we still have April and May to do a lot of the work. So if you can see that the work's scheduled to be done, then I'm comfortable presenting it in March.
My concern is that what happens when we get to March and we're not where we hope to be? I hope we're where we hope to be, but what happens if we're not? And that doesn't leave much time in the remainder of the school year to really, as you, you know, pivot and change, like, you know, as you say.
So for the bulk of these, we met today on these goals. And we met today, and the principals are going to be meeting with me over the next two weeks to align their goals. A lot of this work we've started. The blueprint is something that we started working on last year. We did it this summer at our Leadership Institute, and they've already started implementing a lot of these things. Are there things that aren't going to be completed, that will be completed in April and May? Absolutely. And like we've seen in the past two years, whoever wrote goals for the, whatever it was, the 1819 school year, thinking they were going to do stuff in March, April, and May, and then the pandemic hit, it was done. So I think maybe to your point, Mr. Salvos, in January, if it looks like we had a budget freeze and we can't do anything, then obviously we can pivot in January. But I'm pretty comfortable knowing that we can lay the foundation for this done between now and January and have the bulk of this either completed or planned to be completed to present to you in March. And then again, as we've done throughout, we've always communicated, we've always stayed in touch. If something's going to be massive that's going to prevent us or me from potentially implementing one of these, it's a conversation that we can have and discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I just hope, I just want to see us get to, and I know everybody wants to see us get to the end of the year and feel like we've made progress, especially after last year. So I think, you know, I feel like every month counts big time. So I guess that's just kind of where my mentality sits. But if we can have the January check-in and kind of get an idea of where we're at, then, then, you know, I think that helps tremendously.
And if in January, we have to push it up to the 30th, that's a discussion we can have. When is the elections? Is it the first week? And is?
Usually the first week. It's the first Tuesday. Like, again, I got to go back to. It'll either be May 3rd or May 10th. So I have to have that report completed, provide feedback to you before, so.
I mean, she did say that we can have people vote on it after the fact. Like, if Lisa and I, if our term is up and we are not here again, we can provide.
Then you have two new people coming, two new people coming on. So like I said, I just.
No, I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're, and I'm comfortable with that, too. The other thing is, like, this is not just a, this is not just a one-and-done.
No, it's a continuation.
But obviously, there's, I mean, you were talking about Johnny K as part of the update and that sort of thing anyway, and you're going to tell us that stuff whether this is happening or not.
Correct.
So that's like part of the ongoing conversation is like, you know, what's the social, emotional learning piece looking like? How is our blueprint coming along? Like, that's going to be consistent throughout all of our meetings all year long. So, yeah, I'm flexible. I understand what you're saying, and I, I mean, I agree. That's fine.
And what I have is, I've created a Google folder, which I'll share with you. It's almost completed, which I already have everything outlined here. I'm just waiting for the goals to be approved. And then from there, I can start importing my evidence. And as we're importing the evidence, we can look to say, wow, Goal 1's looking like it needs some more evidence. Goal 2 might, so we can play with those timelines. But you'll have the ability to look at the evidence throughout the course of the school year. And then again, if we need to move it from March 16th to March 30th, we can move it at one date. And that still at least gives you the month of April and two meetings for us to come together and talk about it and vote on it.
Okay. It's just because we didn't do one last year, so we're making sure we cover it with the active members that are here.
Yeah, I understand.
So to make sure everybody's good to go. And then next year, it definitely would be for the whole year because we'd have enough.
Start right away.
Yeah.
I think one of the things we discussed is maybe in July, having a retreat.
Yep.
And as part of that retreat, school committee can do goal-setting. I can do some goal-setting, and we can take those goals, work with principals. So instead of waiting until October.
Right.
To present everything, we can present in early to mid-September, which then gives us an extra month to do things. It would be good if you voted on these.
Sorry. Be looking for a motion?
I move that we approve the Douglas Public School Superintendent's 2021 to 2022 Educator Goals presented at the school committee meeting of October 20th.
Motion made by Becky, second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you so much. Over to you, Ms. Courtney, for the school committee and subcommittee report. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Becky.
All right. Ms. Mulder signed warrant 16, school year 22, dated 10/14/2021, which was nine batches totaling $65,514.79. And Ms. Mulder signed warrant 16, school lunch year 2022, dated 10/15/2021, which was three batches totaling $14,537.84. And we did receive the full documents to.
Okay. Over to you, Courtney, now.
Are we consenting?
No, consent agenda. I'm like trying to.
Because we went to.
I am out of sync.
We went to the second page, so typically that's where, which, we're here to do the second reading on BEDH, public participation at school committee meetings. At our last meeting, we had two changes that you'll see reflected here. The first one is in the fourth paragraph where we put in parentheses and we italicized the actual law there. So it's pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. So it's pursuant to MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 20G, and then we cite the law, "No person shall address a public, a meeting of a public body without permission of the chair, and all persons shall, at the request of the chair, be silent. No person shall disrupt the proceedings of a meeting of a public body. If after a clear warning from the chair, a person continues to disrupt proceedings, the chair may order the person to withdraw from the meeting, and if the person does not withdraw, the chair may authorize a constable or other officer to remove the person from the meeting." So that's taken straight from the law, and we italicized it and put it in quotes. The other change that we did, and we talked to our school council on it, was in number three, where we said, there was a line in there that had "on the day's agenda." And we removed the line that said "on the day's agenda." So it just reads, "Topics raised during the public comment period shall be limited to the items that are within the scope of the school committee's authority. Areas that are within the school committee's authority are the Douglas Public Schools' educational goals, policies, budget, and the performance of the superintendent." So those were the two changes that we discussed at our last meeting that are reflected here in the policy.
And the student address? I might have forgot.
Oh, the student address wasn't part of the policy, but it was a question to ask our attorney, so let me do that.
I think if they just say their name and-
And what school?
Where you're from and-
Yeah, it's just the school.
Yeah.
That's all I need. I think that that would suffice the-
I think it's in two.
Yeah. They began their comments by saying their name, address, and city-town. So like, we're looking for some sort of addendum, like, unless a student, a student or a minor?
Maybe a minor in case-
If you asked for a Greg.
I'll ask for Greg's input on that. So why we do three readings? And everything else is as is. I will contact Mr. Pagnini tomorrow and get that. I apologize for not having that in there. Any other questions on the policy? In terms of JKAA, we're still, again, waiting from advice from Desi and from our legal counsel on that, so we'll hold that until our next meeting. Now, what should be on the first page is on the second page.
I'm so sorry, sorry.
Lauren was out, she typically does the agenda, so Courtney and I work on putting and formatting the agenda, so that's why it's a little bit off from how it typically works.
So Courtney, the school committee, I mean, school business and operations managers report?
I do not have anything for this evening.
I mean, I love hearing it, but-
Even though you tried to hear from me three times. Nope, nothing this evening.
Any topics not anticipated?
I do not have anything.
Do we don't need to go into executive session?
We do not.
Then I would like to adjourn for the evening at 7:12 PM. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion and a second?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Sorry.
I move that we adjourn at 7:12 PM.
Second.
Motion made by Becky, second by Lisa. All those in favor?
Aye.